Anyway. All right, well, I'll call her for the next one. Anyway, this is the May 24th. Hey, you guys sat?
Sorry.
Karam, let's see.
It's great to be here, man.
I knew you'd enjoy it. May 24th, 2018, Town of Nantucket Board of Appeals meeting. Can I get an approval, the agenda is written?
So moved.
So, a motion to approve, I meant to say. Lisa made the motion, Michael seconded. Any further discussion? No, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Fifty-one oh three, Rugged Scott LLC, Rugged Scott, AKA Beach Plum, forty B. For the applicant.
Mary Ann Handley for the applicant. I just want to follow up on some points that were raised at the last meeting and I, just for conciseness and my own sanity, I was just going to read basically some information.
There's a copy. I believe I have them, not very, but I might not have what Karen was.
I don't think he was on this. The last meeting, we were talking about how the garage easement on lot 24 not being able to resolve it would make the project uneconomic. As per our many discussions, our view is that the garage easement on lot 24 to benefit the owner of lot 33 didn't require your approval. The history and context for this was described and discussed at length in the summer of 2007 at ZDA meetings in June and July, and you are also provided with materials quantifying the relative impact of all easement areas on affordable lots. For instance, lot 10, which does not have a garage easement, has 4,065 square feet of uneasement area.
Sorry. Let me just get Alana on the phone, if you don't mind. We're getting into areas that are probably beyond us. Okay.
Your call has been forwarded to an automatic voicemail system.
Never mind. Go ahead. Sorry, sorry, Mary Ann. Go ahead.
Lot 10 has 4,065 square feet of uneasemented area. Twenty-four, which is the subject and has a garage, has 3,935 square feet of uneasemented area. And I'm not sure uneasemented is a word, but it's the best I could do. And lot 33, which does not have a garage easement, has 3,0951 square feet of uneasement. The differences are minimal. The garage use easement areas have not hindered the construction and occupancy of the affordable dwellings, nor have they created any inconsistencies with the local needs under the purview of the ZBA. Notwithstanding, the ZBA still had concerns, and as requested by the ZBA's forty B consultant, Ed Marchand, Rugged Scott formally requested a modification to the comprehensive permit, the form and content of which modification was negotiated with and accepted by Mr. Marchand prior to its submission. At the board's September 2017 meeting, the ZBA determined the matter was not insubstantial. The applicant reserved its right to appeal that determination, and the public hearing on the modification has been ongoing since September. The approved garage on lot 24 was built in 2015, and the building permit application and the plans submitted for that application referenced that it was to be used by lot 33. Prior to the construction, similar easements had been granted without objection from the ZBA, the monitoring agent, or the attorneys representing the purchases of the lot, subject to the easements. Being a condition of sale, the garage easement in favor of lot 33 was formalized at the May 24, 2016 closing. As background, the right to use a garage was critical to the purchases of lot 33. They wouldn't have purchased the house without the garage. Economically, selling lot 23 was equally important to the Beach Plum project. Just like everyone else in the country, Beach Plum was clobbered by the impact of the Great Recession. There were no sales in the subdivision from 2011 through 2013. There was only one sale in 2014. Sales started to pick up in 2015, but not enough to make up for previous years. And in the spring of 2016, Rugged Scott knew that it was crucial to generate more market sales in order to offset construction costs of the affordable units. By being able to provide a garage for lot 3, that was what made a critical market rate closing happen just before Memorial Day weekend, not only enhancing the prospects for the summer marketing season, but more importantly, providing substantial and needed capital for the project. Several months later, the sale of lot 24 commenced. Throughout that process, the existence of the easement in favor of lot 33 was fully disclosed to the purchaser of lot 24, and the physical use of the garage by the owners of lot 33 was visible and ongoing. Having full notice of same, the purchases of lot 24 entered into agreement to purchase the property with the existing easements in place and closed the sale on December 16, 2016. At its most basic level, the denial of the requested modification will make the project uneconomic. The process of undoing the easement between the owners of lots 23 and 24 is not within the control of Rugged Scott and is not possible without the cooperation of the owners involved. Through counsel, we have been informed that the owners of lot 33 are not willing to forego their easement rights and that the owners of lot 24 want those rights terminated. Litigation will most likely ensue, and costs, which will be substantial, cannot be fully quantified until final outcome is reached. As the ZBA is well aware, the expected financial results of the Beach Plum's development will be well below the threshold of economic viability, as will be confirmed by the cost certification process required at the end of the project. At best, given the time delays and depressed prices caused by the Great Recession, Rugged Scott anticipates that the project will break even, although costs not previously anticipated regarding garage easement modifications have not yet been added into that calculation. Finally, as you're also aware, in order to resolve this matter, Rugged Scott negotiated an agreement with the owner of lot 24 last winter, wherein a series of significant improvements would be made to the house on lot 24 in exchange for the support of the lot 24 owner for granting the proposed modification. The agreement was negotiated in good faith between the parties, memorialized with plans, and a written description of the improvements was exchanged and confirmed by her then attorney. The agreement was confirmed by the lot 24 representative at the January ZBA meeting, and the decision to grant the modification, subject to the agreed-upon terms, was continued to February, when final HDC consents to the proposed work would be available. However, at the February meeting, the lot 24 representative stated that she was engaging new counsel and that she was not willing to adhere to the agreed-upon settlement. Since then, she and two other subsequent attorneys have promised to engage in discussions and earnest efforts to resolve her concerns, but communications to them have been generally unanswered. We were, however, recently informed that through counsel that a contractor friend of the property owner claimed that the agreed-on basement access plan might undermine the existing foundation. That claim's not accurate, and through its architect and engineer, my client is still happy to review that concern with the lot 24 owner. Should the board wish to condition its approval of the modification request upon the completion of the work previously agreed to by the owner of lot 24, that condition would be acceptable to Rugged Scott. We urge you to approve this modification request. Request of relief is consistent with local needs, and failure to approve the modification will render the project uneconomic. For your reference, I think we've already given you this before, but I've also attached a list of the lot 24 improvements. The one at the bottom about this planting has already been done. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you. So, is no one else, is anyone else in here to talk about this specific issue? No. Okay, thank you. So, all we need to do today, if we're in agreement, we don't have to take a vote on the issue. We just need to vote to close the public hearing, in which case then we have a certain number of days to render a decision. We can debate the points with Mary Ann. It doesn't appear that the lot owner is here, so, and those discussions have seemingly not borne any fruit. It's been a long time. So, well, how do you feel about the poll?
I'm probably as sick of it as everyone else here. One thing that was never clear to me, as clear as I would have liked to have been, is whether the buyer of lot 24 ever agreed that they didn't know anything about the garage prior to their first encounter with property.
Well, they're not here to speak to it, so.
I know it's been said, but I was never, never got the impression that there was any agreement on that issue.
Yeah.
I can't speak for the owner of lot 24, but I do have the purchase and sales agreement that was signed for the closing. And one of the provisions in the agreement said that the property would be subject to the following restrictions, one of which was a grant of easement dated May 19, 2016, recorded in Book 1539, page 266, providing access and exclusive use rights of the garage upon the premises to the owners from time to time of 14 Blazing Star Road, Nantucket, shown as lot 23 on plan number 200661, currently owned by Lauren Cuneo and Andrew Cuneo. It was in the purchase and sales agreement.
Mm-hmm.
It was, I dealt with counsel on it. I did not deal, I've never dealt directly with them.
No, I knew it was in the purchase and sale agreement. And you did deal with their counsel on it? Their buyer's counsel?
We negotiated the purchase and sales agreement. He didn't question it.
And was this the one we had, the correspondence at closing, between you and the counsel about this easement area?
No, that was, that was another one. No, we were never informed that it was an issue, and frankly, until we filed the application.
I think the implication was that, and again, that's all it is. Again, it doesn't matter what the implication was.
Would there be actual numbers that show that this is uneconomic?
Yeah, well, again, Mary Ann or Rugged Scott making the assertion that this is all uneconomic and that we're aware of how it would be uneconomic, or that we're aware that the threshold of economic viability is going to be crossed by this, I mean, we're not aware of anything, because we don't have any proof of anything to that extent. And your assertion that you can't give us any numbers, which is fine, it's up to you, because you can't factor in the litigation costs, I mean, again, I think we would have certainly accepted an estimate of the litigation or legal costs, rather than just say, we can't give it to you, but you should be aware that it's uneconomic. So, that, I don't know what else we can do about it. But I agree that we should probably have had some figures.
Yeah.
If you're going to make the assertion. So.
Giving you final figures when we don't have the project completed, it's kind, it's difficult. I don't want to guess.
Well, you have, at the beginning of the project, you have a pro forma that states that this project is going to make, I mean, that's what you base the project on.
Right.
You base any project on projections. So, you have numbers up to today, and then you would project out the rest of them, obviously. And we would either accept or not accept, or question the numbers, or whatever. But for whatever reason, you don't want to produce that information, and that's fine. That's your prerogative. But, I mean, to say that we should be, somehow make the assertion that we are aware of the economic viability or non-viability of this project, it's just, we have nothing to be said on.
We have no idea.
We have no idea.
We don't know how much it costs to build the houses versus how much you sold them for. I mean, we have no idea.
So, I mean, ultimately, it would seem that if it, depending on how a vote goes, if it were, you'd have to prove that elsewhere. So, that's up to you. But we've asked, and we haven't been given the info, and I don't see the owner of lot 24 here asking to continue this yet again. So, I mean, my inclination would be to close the public hearing, and then we can discuss a vote. I would prefer to discuss a vote at a later time. Is that okay with everybody?
It's not at a public hearing.
Well, it wouldn't be a public hearing. We wouldn't be accepting a testimony or debating points with Mary Ann. We would, or Rugged Scott in general, we would just discuss it and take a vote, one way or the other. On the modification request, which is all we're really talking about. And then if it gets settled, well, it doesn't matter. So, how does everyone feel about that issue? Closing the public hearing? Yeah? Okay. So, for the purposes of moving on, can someone make a motion to close the public hearing as to, as it relates to the request for a modification? I mean, I wish Alana was on the phone to put that in better terms, but.
Should we try again, just one more time?
I think it's, I think that ship is sailed for now. Eleanor, do we have to do anything special in terms of a motion?
Well, if you want to do it exactly, verbatim, the way she had you do it for lot 27.
I would.
I may be able to locate that motion, if you give me a second.
I will.
That was closed in February?
No idea.
While she's doing that, Mr. Chairman, how long do we have to act in weeks after we close the hearing?
Forty days.
Forty days.
So, the decision is to be rendered.
So, then we discuss it at the next hearing?
Right.
It's June 14?
June 13th, I think.
All right, we'll have to take it up on the next regular schedule.
Yeah.
We're just two weeks from now.
Okay, yeah. The decision would have to be rendered within 40 days to close the public hearing. And then we have 14 days from that point to file the decision with the town council. It's just for me to know. I can't find it, but I would say that the motion should be to close the public hearing as it pertains to the request for a modification regarding lot 24, and then, you know, flesh out the details of the request for, to allow a garage to be cited for benefit of an adjacent lot in a garage use easement. I can, I can find the language in a part of email.
The request was just to show the garage easement. The lot was already there on the plan.
Okay, well, we have two choices here. We either, if we're comfortable with just a generic, if you will, motion to close the public hearing, we can do that now. We could, another option is to continue this to the July, June 13th meeting, in which point we could not only close the public hearing with a properly worded motion, and we could also then discuss the vote and take a vote at that time. In other words, not, I'm not.
We're not going to offer any new information.
No, I know.
We're perfectly fine with a generic closing of the public hearing on this matter.
I know you are.
I don't, I don't see what your concern is about closing the public hearing.
I don't have any, I don't have any great concern, quite frankly, but I like, you know, because you have mentioned that you plan to litigate it. I just want to.
No, I don't, I don't plan to do that.
Well, if, if.
I don't know what the decision will be.
Good point. If indeed it doesn't go your way, all I want to do is make sure we're crossing the t's. So, I think, I'm fairly comfortable with a motion to close the public hearing as it relates to this matter. I think that motion is sufficient. How does everyone feel about that?
Chairman May, by closing it, we're not foreclosing our opportunities to seek advice from Alana on what our options are.
No, I don't think so. Let me try her one more time, just to. Will you just confirm I have the right number, Eleanor? Six one seven?
Seven five five oh six seven four?
Oh, not yet. That's probably part of the problem.
I thought you had your eyes off right now.
Right. I put it in wrong.
You put in the wrong spot.
What'd you say?
I, it's Ed Tool. I apologize.
I should fix your thing right now.
I tried to call you earlier, but someone put the wrong numbers in my phone. Anyway, to make a very long story short, we are discussing Rugged Scott, the garage situation on 23 and 24. We've gotten to the point where we want, would like to close the public hearing. Does that have to be, do we have to be concerned about the language of the motion in that regard?
I would use, I would use, I would use language that's similar to the language that you used last time, and there was an issue in these remaining garages you had asked for a pro forma. And my understanding was that the developer had indicated that one either was being repaired or that an answer would be had on that at some future date.
Okay, well. No, I'm going to summarize, because I was too inept to put your number in properly and dial the wrong number. So, the developer's counsel has read something to us that basically makes the assertion that the project is uneconomic or would be rendered economic, but doesn't provide any sort of pro forma evidence to that effect. So, and doesn't seem interested in providing that. So, we're, I guess, beyond that point. So, I think the board.
Okay, so they've been given the opportunity, and they declined essentially, and instead of giving you the pro forma, that you then would have the opportunity to have peer reviews, they chose instead to give you a conclusion that it's their conclusion with no evidence. I mean, obviously, I assume that whatever they gave you doesn't go through any numbers to say, look, this is what it cost us, and this is why this puts us over the edge.
No, there are no numbers. They're just the assertion that it renders the project uneconomic. So, I think the board is ready to close the public hearing in that regard.
I did find the motion, Mary Ann, sorry.
Okay, then you can go ahead, certainly if you're ready, if we're ready to go ahead and close the public hearing. You have another meeting, obviously, in early June. You, I can prepare a decision for you, if you would like, if you want to authorize you to do that, that would be very similar to the one that you did the last time, which is, you know, changing the name, you know, the lot numbers and so forth, and adding in, it's all representative, the latest letter that you asked for, you know, for a pro forma, and if you can get one, and so no proof was offered as to, you know, to establish that it would render them uneconomic. I'd be happy to do that if you'd like.
Uh, yeah. I mean, that doesn't, yes.
And then, I mean, I can have it ready for you to review before your next meeting, and then you can vote on it at your next meeting.
Okay, perfect. So, Eleanor, would you read back that motion from the last time?
I'm tailoring it to this particular lot. Motion to close the portion of the pending public, pending, we don't need to say pending, because this is the last portion of the hearing.
I can't hear, I can't hear, actually.
Yeah.
Here. Is there a line that you can hear? Motion to close the pending public hearing regarding developer Rugged Scott LLC's modification request to amend the comprehensive permit decision and approved plan of record to allow a garage on lot 24, an affordable parcel, and to be used for the benefit of lot 23, a market rate parcel, and regarding the related easements that have been requested.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine. Okay, so, will someone?
You could, you could go on and, and, okay, never mind. You can, you can go, go ahead and do that. You might want to also authorize counsel to write a decision, but you haven't indicated to me, you know, what that decision would be, so you would need to tell me.
Do we need to tell you at this time?
Well, I mean, if you want me, I can write a positive decision to grant the relief. I can write a decision to deny the relief. I can do it in the alternative, so you have choices.
I think what we would be interested in is choices. I don't think, I don't.
Unless it's, it's cut and dry.
Right.
Normally, we would do the motion in the affirmative and vote it down or vote for
Yeah. My thought was to close the public hearing and then discuss the vote at the next public hearing. And which, in which case, we could certainly, I think the choices option would be best at this point. Is that how the board feels, or are we pretty set one way or the other?
Yeah, I'd like some.
Well, you do need, you do need to close the public hearing.
Right.
Before you, you know, you vote on how to, how to dispose of the matter. Do you see it all, what motions, you know, if you were ready to do that, that would be covered. At this point, I would go ahead and close.
Yeah, that's what we wanted.
Why don't I make that motion?
Okay, so Lisa makes the motion, as Eleanor recited it. And is there a second?
Second.
Karam seconds it. Any further discussion? No. So, all the, so, the voting group, you voted on the last one.
I don't think, I don't think Karam has been consistently present for this, so it might be better.
Okay. So, Karam did not second that. Will you? Can someone else second the motion? Jim seconds the motion. Okay, so the motion was made by Lisa, seconded by Jim. So, it's the five of two, four, five. Okay? It's going this way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, Jim?
Jeff.
Jeff.
Michael, Edward, and Lisa. Okay, so the motion is, carries unanimously. Okay, so now, do we need to, can, do we, we don't need to continue this matter to the July 13th meeting, do we? I mean, June.
June, June, June. No, you don't need to continue, continue. You just close the public hearing, so that's all set. You can certainly authorize me to, you know, go and prepare a decision, and I'll do it in the alternative, you know, to grant, to deny, to brief, and then you can pick and choose and do it at your next meeting. The problem is, is that from this point forward, you have only 40 days to make your decision, so, you know, I want to get the decision drafted to you as soon as possible.
Yep, that works. What's that?
Forty, forty days goes pretty quickly.
Yeah, so let's, can I get, do we need a motion and a vote on that matter, or can I just authorize you to do that?
You know, I, you know, you can certainly authorize me to do the decision in the alternative. In the event that it were to be, you know, a direction for counsel to prepare a decision that was negative, to deny the relief, or to grant the relief, or to grant it with conditions, then you would be, you would be really a motion for that and a vote.
Okay, so having said that, it sounds like, did everyone get that? I mean, it sounds like we'd like a motion to authorize town council to draft at least two, two motions, one in a negative, if you will, one in positive, and what else?
Does counsel think that there should be a third?
That's fine.
The third would have been one with conditions, but that can be deposited, we can discuss that, I think, at some time.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Let's, so, Lisa, will you make that motion? Lisa makes the motion. Jeffrey, or Jeffrey, you're.
Second.
Jeffrey seconds it. Any further discussion? No. So, the same voting members, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That was, that was unanimous. Okay, thank you. All right, so moving on. What's that?
Does Susan need to come back in?
Okay. Okay, so now, once Susan returns, I'll wait a moment. Oh, okay, thanks. Okay, so now we're on to 2018 Surfside Crossing LLC, Surfside Crossing 40B for the applicant, please.
Marion, it's my understanding that we're, you're going to run through your list of peer review people, so I'm not sure how you want to do this, Ed, if you want to-
I guess we'll just-
We did send over an objection to two of the persons on the list, or two of the firms. One is Horsley Witten, and the other one is John Chesia.
And what were your specific-
On Horsley Witten, conflict issue, they are, they represent the land council, and they're actually listed on the land council's website as, you know, doing their work, and, you know, they've asked their donors to fund them so that they can continue to do more with, work with them, and the land council has already hired attorneys, and has actually appeared at the last meeting in opposition to this project. And then, on the flip side of it, Peter Freeman, who's also counsel to our project, is working with Horsley Witten on several other 40B projects, and he said, you know, that there should not be any-
Chairman, I really can't hear any of it.
Is your mic working?
She said it is.
It is? Oh, no, Ilana can't. Maybe if I turn the phone.
Should I try this?
Try that, if you don't mind.
Ilana, can you hear that?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, I hear that.
Okay, there was a problem with the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear Marion now?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
This is better.
Okay, on Horsley Witten, first of all, they have a conflict, they represent, do all, the land council's work, they're listed on their website as, you know, asking people to donate to them, so they continue to can work with Horsley Witten. And then, Peter Freeman, who's our counsel on this project, is also working with Horsley Witten on several other 40B projects off island, and he said there should, you know, even the hint of impropriety that Horsley Witten might be doing something in our favor because of his affiliate, their affiliation with Peter on those projects is not acceptable. And then, the second objection was Mr. Ch-
Still really hard to hear.
Okay, I'm going to summarize, that on the Horsley Witten issue, Marion is making the assertion that there's a conflict, the Horsley Witten works with the land council, who has objected to this project, I don't know if they've objected to it as much as they commented, but anyway, they're on the, on the land council's website, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and secondly, the Horsley Witten is working currently with Attorney Freeman on several other projects off island, and they don't want any hint of, or implication that there might be a, you know, favorable look at the project based on the relationship. Okay?
Certainly, I understand, I guess, what Steve said, you know, certainly, that would be for the board to determine as to whether that appears to be a problem. It doesn't, it doesn't sound like a problem to me, in the event that Horsley Witten indicated that it could, you know, move forward fairly and impartially, and perhaps they would determine that she, they have, have some kind of interest that would concern them, and if they did, then they would say so. It's not, it's not leaving off the page, Abby. Has anyone talked to Horsley, which is not our side, is, was it, they think they have a conflict, if we disclose who the applicant is?
Yeah, we did ask-
May through the chair, I have reached out to the firms that are in the list, and I've spoken directly with every one of them, and they all, including Horsley Witten, assert that they don't have conflicts. Horsley Witten in particular, I spoke with Brian Kuchar, said that they're aware that their work with Satcham's Path might appear to be a conflict, but that was the only thing that they brought to my attention. They feel that that particular work in the past would not present a conflict. They did not bring up the NLC association. The other thing that would draw to my attention-
You have any trouble here, you have any trouble here again?
Yeah, I'm going to summarize again. We've talked, we, Eleanor, spoke or sent a letter to each one of the potential consultants, all have asserted that they don't have conflicts, and Brian Kuchar at Horsley Witten did bring up the association with the Satcham's Path project as, I think, just to let everyone, you know, he didn't feel it was a conflict, but he wanted it out there, that they did work for that, that, that group. Now, I don't see why that would be a conflict. So, now, I have to-
That's the work that's done, though.
I have to ask Eleanor, did, were, they were aware of who the applicant is?
They know that it's Surfside LLC, and in the documents of the application, there is, the LLC certs are in there, and you can see who the principals are for the LLC. Some companies asked if you knew behind the LLC, and they did not, which either means they weren't worried about it, or they figured it out themselves.
Okay, so the summarize, did you hear that?
Yeah, I need to summarize.
Okay, to summarize, it was not, it's not 100% clear to me that they knew, although the LLC docs are in the submittal, which say who are the LLC principals, but I don't know that Attorney Freeman was listed in those docs.
Well, he's listed in the team, in-
Okay, he's listed as part of the team. So, the assertion is that, and again, I'm not saying we've, we've agreed to this yet, the assertion by the applicant is that Horsley Witten's association with Peter Freeman on other current projects may be a conflict. I don't necessarily see it that way either, but we'll, we'll get to that.
Yeah, the issue would be whether there's a conflict with the, with the applicant, and whether there's a relationship that is of concern to the board, because even in a situation where there is a potential for a conflict, you know, if it's disclosed, and all the parties agree, then, you know, then it's not a problem.
Right, so we'll get to that.
Again, just not, just not leaving off the page, Abby, okay?
As Ilana said, the decision as to if the conflict is with the applicant, and rather than have to file an appeal, we, you know, you've got six, seven, six other firms on here that we have absolutely no objection to, and in the spirit of working cooperatively with the applicant to identify appropriate consultants, as is required-
You speak in the mic.
Under the regulations, again, we feel that Horsley Witten does have a conflict, the land council has sent out a writing opposing this project, they've hired counsel, Horsley Witten works for them, and on this paperwork, you know, that Eleanor sent out is, you know, have done work for the land council. And, you know, also, the fact that they've worked on Satcham's Path next door could influence what, what the outcome would be on this, and we do, you know, it's our conflict, we're not willing to waive it, and again, as Mr. Freeman said, he said, just, I do not want the hint of impropriety to taint this proceeding, and we, he said, we cannot, because of my affiliation with Horsley Witten on other projects, he said, I, we cannot agree to it. So, I would ask you to take that into concern, and look at your other list. Do we want to go on to the next objection?
I, I, I think so, or do we want to discuss?
Or do you want to, I'm, I don't know how you're planning to discuss-
Well, can we, can we, we have time to reach out to another, do we only reach out to one?
Oh, yeah, no, there are multiples.
No, there's a whole bunch on the list.
You'll see in the staff report.
Yeah, no, there are multiples. Right now, the applicant, you know, ultimately, we would have to decide whether or not we think it's a conflict, and then if we, and then if not only we decided it's not a conflict, but we wanted to hire them, the applicant has the, the right to go, to appeal to the board of selection, of all people, to, to, to figure this out, and that forestalls the time clock on this. 180 days is, forestall is probably not the right word, but the clock stops.
It uses for one month.
Yeah, it stays for the-
It's a week after one month.
So, anyway, that's what we would have to decide. Not only is it not a conflict, but those are, those are the guys we want. So, why don't we move on to the next objection, and then, go ahead.
Eleanor, do you know what page it is in the packet?
Uh, yeah, there's a table of contents with the packet.
There is.
Which, which?
I have the list, I just wanted to make some notes, I'm, I have the list on the iPad, but I wanted to see it in the packet.
Oh, I got you.
As I said, there's a table of contents in the packet.
I didn't see a table of contents.
I think it was page, started page 266-ish.
Okay, thank you. I didn't, I didn't see the table of contents when I was looking through it. There it is, got it, thank you.
Okay, so, let's just table that for a moment, that objection, or, and then we'll go on to the next.
Okay. The next one is Chesia Consulting Services. This has more to do with, it's difficult to make a decision based on a lack of information that's here. It's not apparent, although this is a long resume, and it says a lot, it doesn't really say anything, and frankly, if I were looking at this resume and thinking about hiring, interviewing this person, I probably wouldn't, especially in comparison to the information that's been provided by everybody else on the list. There's nothing here to indicate, and I'm not, I don't think that anyone here has any familiarity with him, we don't believe he's done any work on Nantucket, there's nothing to indicate that he's done any work on the Cape and Islands, so it's very important, not only to my client, because the peer review has to be done properly and correctly, but I think it's also important to the board and everybody else in this room, that the people that are doing the peer review are familiar with Nantucket. They know, not just knowing that it's a place on a map.
Well, I definitely don't agree with that, but-
Well, can I finish?
Yes.
Thank you.
I thought you were.
No. Several of, Cape and Islands, familiar, with the geography, with the topography, somebody that's worked in Greenfield, Massachusetts, all his life, is not, probably going to be the best choice for something here. I have no idea if Mr. Chesia worked there, but I'm just saying, that's the example. Everyone on this list, Mr. Pesci, Haley and Ward, West Beta, I think they're called, Beta Group, Weston and Sampson, Van Ness, Tetra Tech, they've all dealt with seaside communities. Beta Group has been, stuff in Barnstable, they've also dealt with a lot of seaside property in Rhode Island, Bristol, Narragansett, Milltown, which has a lot of the same concerns as this island. So, it's, it's really, it's important that the learn, you, like you said, you know, 40 days goes fast, well, 180 days goes fast. So, it's just better to have a consultant, and you've got several on this list, that can hit the ground running, that are not going to have to start from scratch to review all of this, and to make it all work, and make it worthwhile, to the extent that some of these people, I mean, I know Van Ness is here working on the in-town bike path, you know, they're here all the time. They can, they can be available, they can answer questions. They, they've been through records, they're not going to have to put the burden on the town offices, like Mr. Chesia is going to have, says, "Well, I need to talk to the water company, and I need to talk to the sewer company," and, you know, basically, if those, if the water and sewer people are qualified to give him, to make decisions into a system, they should just be doing this, they shouldn't be sent out for peer review. So, we feel that given the list of candidates here, you've got six candidates that are very good, that are very qualified, that we have no problem with. The other two, for the reasons we've mentioned, we would suggest that you not use them.
All right, well, Mike, did you hear that, Ilana?
Um, what I think I heard, I heard something about Beta Group, and then I heard something about John Chesia, and something about-
All right, I'm going to summarize. I'll summarize, if you don't mind. Rugged Scott is, oh, no, the applicant's making the assertion that John Chesia does not, well, lacks any local knowledge, and that somebody with local knowledge should be doing the peer review versus somebody without, because they're going to have to, quote unquote, "review everything" and get up to speed. My personal feeling about the notion of reviewing everything and getting up to personal, uh, speed is, I thought that's what the consultant's supposed to do, is review everything, and, and-
And that, that objection is not one that would give rise to a successful appeal, in my opinion, under 44, 53. Gee, the only two bases, you know, that can be put forward to appeal this election would be either a conflict, or the fact that the person isn't, isn't qualified, doesn't have the minimum requirements, which I believe brings three years in the field, or, you know, there are very specific requirements, and they're minimal, and the fact that someone is not, does not have familiarity with the, with the particular land or, or condition would not be a basis to object. It's something that the board can take into consideration, if the board has a concern about it, if, you know, independent concern about it, that's, that's perfectly fine, but that's not something that could give rise, in my opinion, to a successful appeal under chapter 44, version 53J.
The appeal that Ilana's referring to is the appeal to this lackman. It's very specific as to, you know, what you can appeal, the conflict, or, you know, you don't meet the minimum standards. So, anyway, having said that, that particular applicant, have you had experience with him?
With John Chesia?
Yes.
Yes, yes, extensive experience with him. I've hired him, I had clients hire him, and I've hired him as an expert in a number of cases, particularly when drainage is an issue. And he has testified, not for me, but for other, other attorneys, before the AGC, leading to, to successful decisions, you know, on behalf of municipality. So, certainly, he has, he has a lot of experience with this type of development.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Thank you. Have you looked at the other applicants? I mean, is there, can we have some discussion? Just, I mean, let's, you know, let's get away from our objections, let's talk about the other people, that's what we're here for.
Well, we have a chance, that's what we're here for. Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. We just heard your objections first. So, we've heard the objections, two of them, and again, while we're moving on, you know, keep back in the, in the back of your mind whether you think those objections are, are, are real, or something we have to take into consideration. So, having said that, there are other applicants, Pesci Engineering, Tetra Tech, Haley and Ward, I believe Haley and Ward was specific to, with the notion that they were specific, going to specifically look at the water department-
They have a broad range of expertise, though, as does-
Right.
The other firm that the sewer-
The sewer was Weston and Sam, and Sampson.
Correct.
Uh, they are already outside consultants for the Nantucket Sewer Department, Van Ness and Assow, Jeffrey Dirk, I know that name, are they, uh-
Traffic.
Traffic, yeah. Beta Group, Horsley and Witten, and John Chesia. So, we can just sort of go, you know, I don't, this, I don't know how do we make this decision or not, but some of them are broad spectrum, some aren't.
Can I just clarify a point on Haley and Ward and Weston and Sampson? They do serve as outside consultants to the town on certain specific areas, but as Eleanor said, they are also multidisciplinary firms. They could do, you know, they could handle the whole project. They, they wouldn't have to be restricted to just one area, because they do have the expertise in other areas.
I, oh, yeah, Haley and Ward, right, 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 right.
Haley and Ward and Weston and Sampson.
Right.
Are we just choosing one?
Not necessarily. I mean, if we want a different traffic consultant, yeah.
I would think we would want multiple, I would think we would want, I mean, my thinking is we, I mean, the people who are doing work for the water company now- is we, I mean, the people who are doing work for the water company now, it makes sense to continue to use them, same thing with the sewer department. If Van Ness is a traffic...
Sorry.
...specialty?
Yep.
I would suggest we use them.
Uh, okay, so...
Mr. Chairman, if I may just interject one thing, which you all probably all know, but the smaller, so-called smaller firms, whether it's one or two, or less than five people, all do subcontract, some of them subcontract to Van Ness, or the HP, or whatever, for traffic, for instance, or other issues that are not within their specific technical purview. So, for instance, Ed Pesci subcontracts, John Chesia subcontracts, so if we don't go with one big multidisciplined firm to do everything, the smaller people could also be able, be able to subcontract out of those other technical review services.
Yeah, my, my personal feeling on subcontracting is, why wouldn't we just contract with, with the other group ourselves?
We can, I just want you to know that is an option, it's been done before.
No, and I appreciate that.
It would save us some money, maybe, right?
Well, we're not paying for it.
Save them some money.
I'm not looking to spend your money either.
Right.
I'm just saying, but, I, I, more to the point, yeah, it doesn't make any sense, we're going to try to work direct.
Yeah.
I mean, if we can.
Yeah.
Unless there's a compelling reason not to, so... So, Jeff, you were sort of going through the list of at least some general ideas. Waste water and sewer, could argue we use the town consultant, not the town consultants, but they're, they're doing work for the town now, do we think that's a plus, or, or a potential minus?
I think in the, I think in the case of the water and the sewer, I think it's a plus.
Because they're so familiar with the system?
That's my feeling, that those two would be a plus.
Okay, just the prior knowledge. How's everyone else feel about that?
So, that's Haley and Ward for the water department, and then Weston and Sampson?
Uh-huh.
Those are the two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I do, on Horsley and Witten, despite their objection, is, uh, they did four conversations in this town, which was pretty much a success, I mean, that vote, well, for them, you know, I wasn't involved, so I don't know.
Yeah, I don't see that as a detractor, I see that as, as a benefit, that they just went through this process, and...
I, I didn't see any conflict, um, but, having said that, if we feel that we're ultimately going to get the same service from somebody else and avoid...
The appeal?
The appeal process, I don't, I don't have a problem with that either. I don't see the, I don't see the conflict issue, but having said that, I think we would have to have a conversation, and they would have to say, again, we don't have a conflict, you know, it was brought up, or you, but, having said that, we can get to that. The Satchem's Path issue, I don't see as a conflict, I mean, what would the conflict be?
Related to Satchem's Path?
They did it, yeah, so, so, uh...
Is there a particular concern with this project, relative to stormwater and drainage? I mean, is that a big concern in that project? I just, I've heard it come up several times, just those two areas, and...
Well, I think it was definitely a concern for the town when they wrote their letter, that, uh, that, that the water, the stormwater, the drainage was contained to this lot, which is, you know, what you're supposed to design, we obviously, or I certainly have no expertise in that.
No, no, I know, I just didn't know if it was like, of more concern, like, if there was some, um, physical attribute of the, either the existing land or the project, that made that something that we especially need to pay attention to, because it has, it just has come up a lot, you know, like...
Uh, I, you know, I think it probably relates, I'm guessing, to the, the impervious surface, the amount of parking necessary to, uh, to support this particular application, so if it proves to be inadequate...
Yeah.
For whatever reason, then the project might need, the develop, the applicant might need to look at the, uh, the dense, not, you know, the project again, so, I think that's why it's come up.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think it's an important part of the puzzle. So, having said that, um...
So, how many do we need?
We basically need site design, uh, yeah, storm, site, the list is right in Eleanor's, staff report, on page six.
Right here, on page two sixty-eight.
Yeah, or page six of her staff report.
Okay.
I mean, that's the list I'm using.
Yep.
Um, which, yeah, traffic, okay. So, traffic, are we good with, uh, what was the one, Van Ness?
Mm-hmm.
There's also Tetra Tech that you're talking about.
Who did it for Satchem's Path?
I don't remember. Um, it was one of the two.
Uh, I think, Tetra Tech did the review for the redrawn, would be...
You're the one on the surf side, right? One of six surf side?
Correct, and I believe Van Ness did Satchem's, it was a long time ago, but I believe Van Ness did Satchem's Path, but, um...
I think you're right.
Okay, I, I, I'm okay with Van Ness and...
I'm okay with Van Ness.
Again, what they, well, let's just be clear, they're not doing the traffic study, they're doing a, a review...
Of the traffic study that they submit?
Right.
Yeah.
Now, if they determine that their methodology was improper, or not adequate, we might ask them to do a traffic study. Is that within our purview to ask them to do the traffic, a new traffic study? Ilana?
You can certainly ask, you, you can't, you can't compel them to do studies, you know, additional studies, but you can certainly ask them to, and in the event that you have a peer review consultant come in and review it, and see what they've done, and it was just what you just said, that, that the methodology was improper, or scope of it was improper, then those are all reasons for you to, you know, have a further conversation with the applicant, and it's certainly, you know, better to have that discussion early on, you know?
Yeah.
But, but no, you can't, you can't require that they go out and do the study, certainly you look at the town, or, or no, you know, included, and you felt that it needed to be, then you refused to do it, and you really felt you had to have it, I've seen boards go and ask the town for the money, and go out and do the study on their own.
Okay, so, we're not there yet, we're just looking to get a consultant, so, are we, are we okay, Van Ness or Tetra Tech?
On the, uh...
On traffic, transportation, traffic, and...
I, you know...
Not parking. Parking would be part of the, I think, uh...
I'm not married to Van Ness, by any means, I don't, you know, I...
Or would you prefer Tetra Tech?
Why not?
Tetra Tech works for me.
Why, why, I mean, why, unless there's some reason, why, why do we have to go with somebody that the developers are opposed?
No, no, they're not opposed to Van Ness.
They didn't oppose to them.
They're, 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 they're opposed to Horsley and Witten.
Right, so...
No, so, I'm talking about traffic, just Van Ness or, uh, or Tetra Tech. Both have done work, both, I'm sure are, are eminently qualified.
And their fees are similar?
Um, well, you know, the only fee thing I saw in the, in the packet was an example from one of the applicant, I mean, not, one of the consultants who sort of gave, gave us an example, their fees elsewhere, but I don't, I don't know, how, how do we deal with the, uh, the cost implications of one...
Tetra Tech here says they're five thousand, well, forty-five, fifty for traffic. I don't know if the other people gave us, and not that that's how we should base it, I just don't know what else to base it on.
Who did, who did the traffic study for one oh six surf side?
Tetra Tech, they, they reviewed the traffic study.
They reviewed it. I'd, I'd...
Just, just the traffic, or did they do everything?
Just traffic, so, they took a look at the parking as well.
In what, Tetra Tech, we feel has a capability, even though we haven't really worked with them?
No, well, we did.
They've done work on them.
What, um, and Van Ness did Satchem's Path, just traffic?
Yes, and they're, they've done, I, I've got the traffic consultant, because I'm involved with the NPOBC, and I've worked, collaborated with Mike Burns, the town transportation planner, so these are some of the firms that are frequently dealing with town issues in terms of transportation, traffic, parking, and so, so Beta Group's...
Does, does Van Ness do work for the planning board?
I, well, I know that they, I don't know, I'm sure that they've been involved in some things, there's so much before the planning board.
I mean, he works with Burns, though, on, on projects?
He's done some things with Burns, yes, and Burns has worked with a lot of different firms, for different firms.
There actually, Van Ness is doing, working for Remain, in designing the in-town bike path, and doing the traffic studies associated with that, which, and, you know, they collaborate with Mike Burns, but...
I agree with Karen.
Going in a different direction.
Let's just move on, then, Tetra Tech?
Yes, I agree, Tetra Tech.
Done. Okay. Uh, and some of these other ones, so sewer and water, we talked about using the present town, not town consultants, but the ones who are most familiar with the town systems such as they are.
I, I agree with that.
That would be my suggestion, on those two, yes.
Um, and, yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I'd, landscape, we're...
I'm sorry, we, we didn't hear, Jeff. What, what was that, I didn't hear him.
Well, it would be, I think, yeah.
We would propose using Weston Sampson for the wastewater review, and Haley and Ward for the water review.
Thank you.
Okay, so then, uh, the landscape, we're not there yet, we don't have a plan to review, other than a general site plan, we did ask the applicant begin to develop a plan. The environmental, I sort of have it under one umbrella, site design and layout, stormwater management, environmental, and zoning compliance, and overall regulatory review. So, you know, again, if we, we have Ed Pesci, Pesci Engineering, John Chesia, Chesia Consulting, Haley and Ward, we've already done Weston and Sampson, Beta Group, know nothing about them.
Tetra Tech.
Or, yeah.
I like John Chesia.
I'm okay with John Chesia, um, but, how does everyone feel?
We just liked his, uh, letter, in terms of his...
I, I like his letter, I like that, um, Ilana's worked with him before, and, um, gives, gives him a, gives, I mean, rather than picking someone, we kind of know who we don't want to work with, or can't, or that there's conflicts with, um, there's a couple that we have some paperwork on that we've been able to review, but I, you know, having a, having town council, um, give a, as, as long as you're, you know, you know, comfortable with that, Ilan, I mean, you, standing on the, the recommendation from you, or your, not recommendation, but your work experience with him, and knowledge of him, I feel like he's, seems like a good candidate for us, especially with the town's concern about drainage.
I can tell you that I've worked with him successfully many times, in, in a number of towns.
Just quickly, Ilana, have you worked with everybody else on this group, on this list? Would just be helpful for us to know.
I can say that I have ever done a sewer project review without it being Weston and Sampson.
Okay.
So, certainly I've worked with them many, many times, um, I certainly have, I've seen Beta Group's work in the past, Haley and Aldrich, I'm familiar with, I think with Haley and, and another, and another, um, person, so I'm not sure I'm familiar with that firm, um...
Haley and Ward. Sorry.
Haley and, who was it?
Haley and Ward.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't, I have not worked, I don't think I have worked with them. And Horsley and Witten, obviously, I've, I've worked with many times.
And of course, you've worked with Ed Pesci. What about Beta Group?
Beta Group, certainly, I have seen them work in many towns, I don't, I don't have, I can't give you some, any specifics, certainly, it's a very familiar name, certainly, I, you know, I think their reputation is quite good.
Okay, thank you.
Is there an efficiency with using Weston and Sampson, because it's one of the reasons why we don't start using?
I would rather split it up, personally, just to, uh, give, give multiple looks at the project. That's how I feel, what are you looking for?
Beta Group's paperwork.
Oh, here it is, I got it.
You got it.
Yep, I, I know I've seen it, I just must have passed by it last time.
I would think I'd do a break them up a little bit, too, and get in some kind of fresh, fresh thoughts, and...
Yeah. I mean, it, it, so, so we just have to decide. The applicant in an email through council said, quote unquote, "We would also like to reiterate that for civil engineering review, we would recommend Pesci Engineering, because he's already familiar with the project, he knows the site, he has already reviewed the plans, and participated in the staff department meeting, and submitted preliminary review comments, and he is familiar with the board's expectation for peer review."
Who is this?
Thanks, Peter Freeman, but that was an email from the applicant.
Well, I mean, I think it's great that Pesci did what he did, but we didn't ask him to do that.
May I please clarify?
Sure.
Okay, I was not here during the portion of the hearing where this was discussed last month, and I'm sorry for that, but, Mr. Pesci didn't do anything that wasn't asked for in terms of being engaged, he was not engaged.
Okay.
He was asked to attend the coordinator review, that's standard protocol, and he was asked to witness, which is also standard protocol, soil tests, that's all he did.
Okay.
He didn't do anything deeper than that, he didn't know he died, he had to take a look at the plans to, to contribute to the coordinator review, standard protocol.
Okay, because this letter makes it sound like...
He's not been engaged in any way, shape, or form, he knew, he knows better than to do anything without being approved as such by the board.
Right.
My, I work very frequently with Ed Pesci on projects, and he's here once a week, if not sometimes twice, um, so, he's, he's familiar with Nantucket, of course.
I'm glad that you clarified that, because that was, it was, that was not, I think, how it was portrayed to us, or how that email...
No, I'm sorry, and he didn't hire Van Ness or anything like that, what he had said was, in passing, if I end up helping the board, I subcontract quickly to Van Ness for traffic, so I would, I would certainly recommend them, that's all.
So, maybe, maybe Attorney Freeman was confused then, when he was talking about that.
I think there was just some crossed wires, I don't think anybody meant to miscommunicate, it was just a crossed wire.
But Susan, your comment makes me ask a question, what, what do you have against Ed working on this project?
No, I don't, I'm just saying, I, that it, the way that it came up the last time, at the last meeting, was maybe presented to us, or at least interpreted by me, that some work was done already, before we had even had a chance to talk about who we were working with, or what we were doing, it doesn't have anything to do with Ed.
I mean, it's, it's just as important to my client, as it is to you, who's working on this, because it doesn't do us any good to, you know, we believe that the people we've hired, we hired Don Bracken for a reason, you know, he's a good engineer, but, we appreciate the second look, in the end, it's probably going to benefit us, because we don't want to make any mistakes, just as much as you don't, it's not going to benefit anybody to have a problem over there, so, the engineering, the review needs to be done.
I think any of these, I think any of these people on the list could do a good job, it's just which ones do we want to choose?
Right, um...
We want you to choose the best.
And I can't tell you what the fees are, because I wasn't doing the scope of services operation with these people, I was just doing the initial outreach to check for conflicts and availability and willingness.
Well, some of them do, some of them, some of them have fees in there, but, it's, it is what it is, I mean, yeah.
I didn't get to that point.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, having said all that, is there anybody in the audience wants to speak specifically about the consultant issue? No. Um, okay, so, how do we feel? About, let's, let's choose one. No. Okay, so, how do we feel about, let's, let's choose one. I mean, it's, it's. Oh, you do. Just come down to the mic and identify yourself.
She's up crutches.
Okay, go ahead.
Actually, if I could stand here because I have some shoulder surgery, I mean, knee surgery is helpful.
You just have to say your name.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just very briefly, my.
Just identify yourself.
Barney Fitzgibbon, 68 South Shore Road. And my thought is to have, you said something about multiple consultants, or to have, you know, a few different peer review looks, and I just want to say, I mean, I don't know how much labor you have with that, but that, to me, sounds like a very fair and sort of balanced way to look at things on this project going forward. So, you know, I just wanted to put in my two cents about multiple, you, I heard you say something, Ed, about maybe speeding it up, or multiple consultants, and I just wanted to say that, that to me, that sounds like a very wise way to go. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Just to be clear, though, we're not talking about multiple consultants to necessarily look at the same thing. In other words, we're not talking about two traffic consultants to look at, to peer review the same study. We're just not, we just, I think, are saying we don't want one consultant to do traffic, storm, everything.
Got it. Okay, yes, and I, I like that idea, too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, back to trying to make a choice. How do we feel?
We worked with Pesci on. And did he, was he involved at all with the 106 surf side as well?
Yes.
And I think I hear a recommendation from him, or an endorsement.
Well, it's not, it's not my endorsement.
That carries with me, you know.
All right.
And, you know, there isn't this conflict that I think we were thinking this was when her, the Bay, he was already engaged. You clarified that, so there isn't a conflict
All right, I have some level of discomfort when the applicant in an email recommends which engineer we should use.
Also, I think that since he's a consultant to the town, I sort of think it's nice for the planning staff to get somebody different.
So do I.
You know, I just think it's, it's another approach, which I think is kind of, on a project like this would be helpful.
Yeah, it's nothing against Ed.
No.
No, I think he did, he did a great job.
And arguably, we would get a little bit of a twofer in that Ed arguably would still be representing the town's interests at any coordinated reviews, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, so that way, yeah, I think that's a great thing.
Yeah, I think that just gives us an extra level.
Yeah. If we chose him, we wouldn't get that benefit.
Right. So, in that regard, I, arguably, we could whittle it down now to Chesia, a little bit of Beta, Horsley and Witten.
So, Beta's, I mean, I know that what they said from the packet wasn't meant to be, there's just not a lot here to know what.
I mean, again, though, Alana says they have a really good reputation, so.
And who was the other one?
Horsley Witten was the other one.
Oh, but that one, I, you know, the applicant's already said that they're not willing to, to waive their conflict on that. I think we.
The other issue that we might see in the packet, that she, with Horsley Witten, is that they are representing the developer, Balkin, in Tacoma Green.
Oh.
Tacoma Green is the.
Fairgrounds Road.
That Fairgrounds Road town thing?
Yeah.
I love some of his names.
And that's before the planning board.
Okay. That was Horsley Witten, right?
That's Horsley Witten.
So, I'm comfortable with taking them off the table for all the reasons. So then, we're down to.
Mr. Chesia.
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 Beta.
Beta. That's it.
Tetra Tech is already doing the.
Chesia.
Because Tetra Tech is doing the traffic, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sure.
I like Chesia.
I'm okay with it.
I just want to remind once more that, I mean, I know, I think, I can't remember which one of you mentioned Beta Group, and they do have stuff, done work in Barnstable, and I looked at their projects today. They've done a lot in Bristol, Narragansett, Middletown, South Kingston, which are all communities in Rhode Island that are basically, you know, jet out into the ocean. I mean, they have, they have the background for that kind of a geographic location, so. If you haven't had, if you haven't looked at their.
Hold on, one sec.
If you haven't looked at their website, I think you owe it to yourselves and to the town to take a look at it.
I just want to mention that when I did call John Chesia to state to you that he just happened to mention that he had done work on the Nantucket before.
Yeah. Do you know where, Alana?
I do not. We didn't, we didn't get into it. I just, after I sent his resume, and then I sent it along.
I.
Didn't go with, he did say that he's done projects in, in the Nantucket before.
I, for one, fail to see why doing a project in some other town that juts out into the ocean has anything to do with peer review of what you're submitting to us.
Because the engineering.
Engineering's.
Apply certain rules of engineering to any project, but the rules of engineering are applied a little bit differently depending upon the topographic conditions that you encounter. I mean, you know, the engineering for the Alps is a whole lot different than in Antietam. You have to, you know, and the more familiarity somebody has with that type of environment, the better able they're going to be, to be able to evaluate what we put in front of them.
And, Mr. Chairman, I will mention also that Mr. Chesia also is an expert in soil.
Yeah, I, I just.
I think I'm very comfortable with Chesia for this.
I am, too.
To represent our interest in this.
Right.
If I can ask one more question. Alana, would you hire Mr. Chesia to appear as an expert witness? Do you feel, which, and basically, an expert witness is generally tried done, do you feel that he can be impartial in evaluating this project, which is his role? It's not to take one side or the other.
I'm just happy to answer that question, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like.
Please.
You know, I can tell you that any time that I hire an expert, I always look, and one of the reasons why I, I tend to hire John Chesia when it's, when it's a civil engineering issue, is because when I look to have an expert testify to a board or support court, I want that person to testify fairly and impartially and not shave things, but to just tell the truth, just absolutely tell it the way that it is and be able to raise the right hand and swear to it in court based upon science and principles, not because it's something that perhaps the expert thinks that the audience wants to hear. It always needs to be clear and factual, period.
Thank you.
Thank you. But, you know, my sentiment is, you know, we shouldn't be hiring someone to peer review because the overall goal is to kill a charge. That's not right.
That's not why we're doing that.
Anybody up here said that?
That's, that's what I'm feeling.
Well, you, you might want to reassess your feelings, because I don't think anybody has stated anything even close to that.
I'll tell, I'll tell you why I want, I'll tell you why I want.
And to get the job done.
So, I don't, I don't see him being, being an expert in some other trial or whatever having anything to do with this. The reason that I support the Chesia firm is because of this continued focus on the, the stormwater runoff and drainage, and this is highlighted in his, his letter, resume that he sent, and that these are particular areas that he has expertise in. Beta didn't really give us that much detail in the, in the two pages we have. I, you know, I hear Alana saying they have a really good reputation. I hear you saying that they've done work in Narragansett and Bristol and all these other places, and those are valid points, too, but I think for the area that we want him to look at, I think that this, he's a good fit. And I'm sure all of these firms have testified for some developer or some town or some, some client at some point in a trial, but I don't think that affects their ability to work.
No, I agree 100 percent. I mean.
So, that's my feeling, just that that, that point is highlighted in, as his, in his wheelhouse, and that's something that's going to be important to this project, so it seems to make sense.
And when you look at his, and when you look at the comparison, he really only does site design, he only does a few things, and everybody else does sort of the whole gamut.
Right.
Yeah.
So, he's specialized.
He's specialized, yeah. I, I kind of like that. I think that, that's a good, that's a benefit to us.
Okay. I think, are we, Karen, you feeling comfortable with the choice?
Yep.
Jim?
Yes.
So, what is the scope of work for Chesia?
He would be doing.
Site design and layout, stormwater management and drainage design, environmental and landscape?
No.
No, not landscape.
No, zoning compliance.
Zoning compliance.
So, one, one, two, six, and seven.
One, two, six, and eight.
Six and seven. Eight is, eight is Tetra Tech.
I have a different, I have a different numeration.
Oh, okay. So, it would be site design and layout, stormwater management and drainage design.
Zoning compliance.
Zoning compliance and environmental.
All right.
And then what's, what do we?
Mr. Chairman, can I just sit down in terms of the scope?
Absolutely.
One of the things that we talked about last time, and I, I might have been the one who was prepping for it actually, and if not, I'm going to press for it now, that there be a charge to look for code compliance overall, you know, the general bylaws and the other, you know, anything that may apply to this project to determine compliance. As you know, I always talk to the board about waivers, and, you know, this is a, this is an applicant with counsel who, you know, is very experienced in, it's been my experience with Attorney Freeman in particular, that he will give the board a set of waivers that will be very specific and really identify everything, you know, that they're darrowing in on. But it is always worthwhile, on your side, to have a peer review consultant that is examining the project as against all of the bylaws and regulatory requirements for compliance, whether it's stormwater, whatever it might be.
All right, so that, that would, that the regulatory.
Yeah, regulatory.
Regulatory review would be part of his purview.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Was it here, was it here zoning compliance that that was?
No, that was just an abbreviation.
That was an abbreviation.
So, it would be zoning, zoning compliance and regulatory review as it relates to any and all regulations and rules and regulations in Nantucket. So.
Great.
We did indeed ask for the waiver list to be fleshed out and put into some sort of spread, we suggested a spreadsheet, so hopefully that will be forthcoming. It'll certainly make peer review a little bit easier, but again, the peer reviewer will not only be looking at the waivers, they'll be, he or she would be looking at everything, so. So, okay, so, I think, I think we're settled on that issue. Architectural, we've determined nothing yet. We need to discuss whether or not, I guess, what, they, I don't.
They've asked for the waiver, but I'm going to the HTC. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to?
They're the waiver, right?
Do we want a consultant as to architectural review, or do we feel competent to do it ourselves?
I don't think we need a consultant.
How do we feel about that? I mean, we, we don't have to necessarily decide this at this moment. I mean, we could also ask, we have in the past, that the applicant actually goes to the HTC. They may review, refuse. We can certainly use the HTC as a consultant. We've done that in the past.
I mean, do we?
Please.
I think that they said, the applicant said at the outset of the public hearing that they are requiring the mediated status.
At the HTC.
As the Georgia Commission. Certainly, you typically do ask that they go to the HTC, I agree you have, just as you asked that they go to water and sewer, because those are three really complicated technical areas, and I believe that they, the applicant is very specific that they are asking, demanding essentially, and they have the right to do.
Okay. I didn't. I didn't think we had asked nicely yet, but.
I think I'd like, I think we should ask.
Yeah, so I.
I thought you did ask nicely.
No, I, I might have said, if we ask nicely, maybe we, they will, but I'm not saying they will, and I don't, yeah. In one way or the other, I think that we could go through the HTC as, you know, giving us.
Having them as a consultant and keep it in house.
But we don't necessarily have to hire a consultant on the architectural aspect. No? You're looking at me askance.
You may remember with the other 40e that was withdrawn, we did end up, because the height issue with those particular structures, we did end up using an architectural consultant that was recommended by Ed Marchand, Mr. Cliff Bomer.
Oh, if you remember that.
Then we had some charrettes with that. So, it came to a point where that became necessary, but it wasn't at the outset.
Yeah.
That was a very different project, obviously.
That was a very different project.
But it was something that evolved, so I don't.
And we have a local architecture group involved in this project who's been in front of the HTC for years, so they know the drill. They know it's appropriate.
Well, it's also a large amount of work. So, it's a function of whether or not we want somebody else to assist in that work. Well, I mean, I feel a certain level of competency on the board to do the work, but I'm just, I'm just bringing it up. Now, Alana, we don't have to, we don't necessarily have to identify each and every, I mean, we may want a consultant at a later date, correct?
Yes, yes. You determine at some point during the presentation that you need an expert, you know, peer review, you can certainly have that conversation at that point. And I did inquire of the attorney in my office who deals with the HTC most frequently, and asked whether it was a particular expert that they used, and I did not get a name back. So, my recommendation would be that you, you very specifically send a, you know, very quoted memo to the commission to look, you know, it would really, would welcome your input. You can even, if you think it's appropriate at some point in the future, invite them in so that they can have a joint session with you. You know, they can assemble, have the commission while you're assembled, and they can, you know, respond to your, your questions, I mean, questions of the applicant, you know, the public, and, you know, that's one option that's open to you. Or they can give you a detailed report.
Joint session letter, okay. I like that idea. Is everybody comfortable with that idea?
Yeah.
I am.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then we talked about landscape. It's not really ready. It's, I would think at some future date, we'll want some help with that.
Site lighting.
Oh, lighting.
Oh, yeah, I don't have lighting on here.
Because they've asked for a lot of waivers from the lighting.
Yeah, lighting. All right. We'll, we have no, we have no choices on lighting, so we'll have to, maybe we can get some lighting consultant choices, or, but again, there's nothing to peer review because there was no plan of the lighting. So, we'll have to wait till a later date to deal with lighting.
Certainly would be worthwhile, Mr. Chairman, to, you know, communicate directly to the applicant with regard to the landscaping and the lighting plans as to when they think, you ask them to, you know, indicate, mandate a plan, you provide those sheets to you. Some applicants will say, gee, if you want to do that, vote approval. And so, that conversation really should probably happen.
Okay, so, what Alana is suggesting is that I ask the applicant when we might see both the landscape plan and the lighting plan. Just to go up to it. I know who you are, obviously.
Hi, Jamie, feel the applicant. We've asked, I've started that process, and so the landscape and lighting is being worked on currently.
All right, so do you think within, any chance for the next meeting, or?
I think so, and we'll do our best to get it in before the next meeting.
Okay.
Don't hold me to it, because I haven't gotten a commitment from our landscape designer, but we'll do our best.
Okay. So, on the next meeting or two, maybe, maybe. So on the next meeting or two, uh, maybe, maybe moving forward so we have something to discuss next meeting, because none of the, I don't think a, a lot of this peer review will be complete. Uh, we could potentially reach out to the HGC and see if they would like to come in for initial comments. Does that make some sense? Eleanor?
Well, I was going to, after this meeting, draft some memos to be signed by you that, as we would always do in this process, that will go out to the various commissions and boards, obviously, HGC, planning board, COMCOM, Board of Health, perhaps, and there may be others, I'm not including at this time, requesting that they review the application within their own jurisdiction and supply us with any comments as needed and as applicable.
Okay.
So obviously, HGC, planning board, with certainty on that list, those memos that are being drafted, I'm in the process of getting them all ready for you to sign.
Okay. Sooner the better, so that, yeah, maybe we would have, do you think we might have something back in two weeks?
Probably not, but typically, I'll give them 30 days to be able to do that, so we can get it on their agenda, and maybe more than one meeting where they discuss this. With the planning board, for instance, it would probably be at the end, and they may not get to it. HGC, as we all know, is very packed agendas. On that note, I have the room reserved for, in the event that you want to do an alternate meeting date, I have the room reserved, so...
For the July, I mean, June 13th?
For either June 7th or June 13th, from 4:30 on.
Yeah, no, I, we talked about that after you, I think after you left, and that certainly is the intention.
I can request a joint meeting with HGC if you like, but I have to get the memo out first.
Okay. So do we, does it make sense to have a motion and a vote for these, this type of issue on the consultants, or... Yeah? Okay. All right, so...
You want to make the motion?
Sure.
Barring further discussion, are we good to, are we ready to take a vote on that?
There we are.
Okay. Susan?
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the, the following consultants for the following review services. So Chesia for site design and layout, storm water management and drainage design, environmental, and zoning compliance, regulatory review, and code compliance. And do we have, then, then just keep saying them?
All right, thank you.
Okay. And then Weston and Sampson for wastewater and sewer, Haley and Ward for water, and, um...
Tetra.
Oh, yeah, sorry, traffic, parking, and transportation, Tetra Tech, and 40B consultant, Ed Marshon.
Okay. Um, that works for me.
Let me get a second.
Karam seconds it. Uh, any further discussion? No. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that, you was unanimous. So I think now we simply need to vote to continue the public hearing to a specific date. I will not be here June 7th, so that does not work.
Well, we wouldn't have enough information at that point.
No, I'm just saying that that was one of the day, some of the thing has to do with the room and the this and the that, so...
So what, do we just go to the 13th at 4:30?
That, that was, I thought, our intention, yeah.
Yeah.
Wednesday, the 13th, 4:30 in this room.
And then, and then we meet Thursday, the 14th, regularly.
Okay.
That will be in the training room.
Our regular meeting will be in the training room.
Just for this one, but next one.
Wednesday, the 13th, at 4:30.
Okay.
The idea being, which we discussed, was to make the meeting at a, a time during the day when the public might have an easier time getting here.
Yep. Okay, so I was just confused because I thought our regular meeting was the 13th. Our regular meeting's the 14th.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Do we need, do we need a public comment, too?
I have a comment about, uh, what, I don't...
He did.
I did.
Go to the public once.
About the consultants.
The consultants.
That's what we're talking about.
We're not talking about anything else today.
Okay.
Um, so if I can get a motion to continue to June 13th at 4:30 in this room.
In this room, or did you say the training room?
Wait, did we didn't...
The training meeting will be in this room.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.[1680.82]